Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the City Attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session, or called executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. It is 6:30, and I'm calling this meeting to order. With us tonight, we have Kali Kawazi? Kawazoei, dang, sorry. And Carly Vanclerick, and they are going to lead us in the pledges, if you will all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, number one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to this one state, number one, indivisible.
And if you will please remain standing, Reverend Bob Long will lead us in our invocation tonight.
Please join me in prayer. Lord God in heaven, as we come before you tonight, we come with great thanksgiving for Bastrop, Texas. We thank you that we are privileged to live, and work, and play, and even pray, right here in our city. And we honor you first of all. But Lord, we pray for our city, and we thank you for your blessings and favor upon our city, now and in the future. Lord, we thank you for our mayor, and all of our city council, and all those who work in the city offices, and our new city manager. Lord bless them, guide them, direct them, and tonight, in this meeting, give them your wisdom and your grace to do what's best for the people of Bastrop in their decision-making. We pray that this will be a safe place tonight. We thank you for our law enforcement community. We thank you for those who watch over us at night. Lord God, we just trust you for what you're going to do tonight, for all the council, the new council, as well as the old. We appreciate them, and thank you for them, and ask that you give them the wisdom they need. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Bob. And I would like, these two young ladies go to Bastrop Intermediate School, and it's a scary thing to do, so I'd like to give them a round of applause. All right, we're going to be moving forward. We're on item number five, oath of office, and we have some business we need to take care of. 5A, consider action to approve Resolution Number R. 2017-37 to canvas election returns and declare results of the June 17, 2017, City of Bastrop historical first runoff election. So, city manager, I have the document. Do I need, does everyone have a copy of this at their?
It is in, uh, I don't see the back. Just like they have it.
So do I need to read it, or they need to make a motion and read it?
Um, I would read all of that into the record.
Okay, so we're reading into the record, the summary of the report for the election held on June 17 of 2017. There are 5,125 registered voters. The ballots cast were 609. Lyle Nelson received 361 votes. Lee Harrell received 248 votes. Happy to entertain a motion to accept the results.
I move that we accept the results of the election. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll please call the roll.
Mayor Potem Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes. Excellent, now I get to turn things over to Judge Dugan.
What's supposed to say, landslide? You ready?
You ready?
I, Lyle Nelson, I love you solemnly swear that I will faithfully run faithfully, execute the duties of the office of the city council, place free of the city of Bastrop, of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States of the United States, in this state and out of this state. So, I'll take capital, don't take us. Congratulations.
Absolutely. Okay, if you push the button in the middle, you'll be hot, and then you give us some words of wisdom, Mr. Nelson.
Mr. Mayor, wow. Uh, I am obviously an emotional guy. Bear with me. I am humbled by this experience. I am honored by the support. Thank you all. I was encouraged by my friends and neighbors. I was energized by new friends and neighbors. I was supported by family. Thank you Jennifer. Truth be told, I was tolerated by family. Thank you Jennifer. Uh, I participated in a well-run, honest, ethical campaign. Thank you Lee Harrell. I acknowledge that I've... This is crazy. I acknowledge that I was appointed by the votes of the citizens of this community to adhere to their desires and advance their desires in our community, not anointed by any special privilege to represent my own interests. I'm ready, willing, and able. So, I say to Madam Mayor, fellow city council members, Madam City Manager, in the words of a famous southern contemporary philosopher, let's get her done.
Welcome, Mr. Nelson. It's nice to have a full dais, and we've got lots of work to do. And I do want to tell the public, in case you are here for some, there's a few items that have been polled, and so I don't want you to sit here and then find out later that they've been polled, and then send me a nasty email. So, if you are here for items 11C, as in cat, 11F, as in frank, or 11G, as in girl, you can go home. Those items have been polled. So now we are on page two. We're at presentations and...
Oh, we got a reception.
Oh, oh yeah. We're going to go have some cake, and make frivolity, and have laughter. So we are going to come. I tried to cheat you out of your party. We'll reconvene about five minutes after seven.
So are we, do we have to be officially in recess? Just recess?
Recession. Okay, we're going to reconvene and keep going. We are now at presentations. And we are going to receive a presentation from Burdett and Associates regarding the master plan for the cultural and heritage trail in Bob Bryant Park, developed by Bastrop Art and Public Places. Ms. O'Brien?
Mayor, council, it is my pleasure to introduce Diana Wilson with Burdett and Associates, who's going to do the presentation this evening. Thank you Sarah, thank you mayor, thank you council. We're so proud to be here and give you this overview executive summary. As you know, it's about a 40-page document, but we're just going to show you five pages. And so, it is an executive summary format, but I do like to start with a quick safety moment. Did you know that pedestrians are one and a half times more likely than passengers in a vehicle to be killed in a car crash on each car trip? So what can we do as pedestrians to be safer when we walk? And this is just a quick reminder. Wear light colored or reflective clothing at night. Always use the crosswalk when possible. Mid-block crossings are not safe. And use a sidewalk, and if there's not one, please walk on the shoulder facing the traffic so you can see the cars, and the cars can see you. So, that's your safety moment. Onto the presentation. This type of diagram is a local context, and we also use it to talk about economic development and tourism opportunities. And, okay. It shows the location of the park, where the red arrow is. That's the existing location of the Bob Bryant Park. And it's an ideal location for this cultural heritage trail project. It's already so well-used and loved by the citizens of Bastrop. Every time we went, we saw children playing, adults exercising. We even saw people from Buc-Ee's on their break. They, I said, "What do you like about the park?" And they said, "Our teacher used to bring us here in elementary school, and so we like to come back whenever we have a chance." And to speak to a few of the opportunities to develop the park into an economic opportunity and for tourism, we would recommend linking the cultural heritage trail with the rest of the city through your existing signage and graphics and wayfinding program. You have these great banners and signs directing people to the wonderful parts of the city, and we would add, hopefully, information and arrows to the cultural heritage trail. It would be great if we could create a website for the park and the cultural heritage trail, and add it to the great phone app that you have, the Bastrop, Texas phone app. And it could be linked under the recreation button as well as the art button. So linking that with your phone app would be awesome. And then third, to leverage the partnerships with the area hotels, and the bed and breakfast, and the great museum downtown, and educate them about the cultural heritage trail and the great amenities that it has for visitors. So if you have someone come to stay in the hotel, and they've been driving across Texas all day, the innkeepers could direct them to the Bob Bryant Park, where they could not only stretch their legs, but learn about the culture and heritage of Bastrop. Our, one of our initial meetings back in February, many members of the BIIPP and Trey Jobb met with us onsite, and we were assessing the site in general. We had urban foresters with us. We had architects, landscape architects, planners, wildlife specialists, to look at the park and learn about the natural resources that were there. But we were also there to listen and learn to the vision that the BIIPP members had for this master plan. And they, they have a big vision. I know Barbara Walansky was there, and she had a great vision for a wildflower meadow that would really honor her mother's legacy. Mrs. Bryant worked for the Lady Bird Johnson's Wildflower Center for 30 years. So Barbara felt that a wildflower meadow would be really nice, and perhaps a butterfly garden. Deborah liked the idea. We had talked about an amphitheater, and she reminded us that everything needs to link to the downtown as well. And she really encouraged us to leave some places where people could just relax and take a break, and, you know, not be such programmed space. And Anne and Georgina were constant champions of making sure that we honor the people and the culture and the heritage within the design elements. Sergio was a, is a member of the BIIPP, and he was excited about increasing the BIIPP presence not only in downtown, but throughout the community. And with his architecture background, he was really encouraging us to also watch out for the ADA compliance of both the existing and the proposed amenities. So we went back to our studio, and we did some sketches in, in the vein of, you know, getting these visions and ideas on paper with little vignettes, like we do. This concept is the wildflower meadow, and it could be a place where people could get married. It could also be just a place to learn about water resources and wildflowers. It could have mosaic stone walls where people could sit and enjoy the view. This is a concept for a hayring archway that could have quotations of various famous people from Bastrop's history, and their quotes. There was an overall theme to have education wherever possible, you know, with the footprints of animals that are indigenous to the area. This is a concept for a playground that's very, not such programmed space, maybe just a few stone walls where children could play the games. We call it playback in the day. Children or adults could play capture the flag games such as that. This is an idea for a tree ring plaza where the rings that were inscribed in the pavement could have important moments from the history of Bastrop. We met again with the committee, and this is the overall illustrative master plan that we came up with, working very closely with them, outlining the elements along the pathway, the proposed sculpture opportunities that could happen along the pathway with a call to artists that they would issue. The, the general walkway that's existing is really nice. There is one area where we might propose rerouting it to avoid pedestrian vehicular conflict, and we think that right now it doesn't meet ADA requirements anyway. Proposing to activate this entrance to the new area of the park, perhaps some new parking, a nature pavilion, and the wildflower meadow that I mentioned, the playground, and even an amphitheater in this area, which I'm going to let our architect, Eric Kaput, tell you about.
Good evening, everyone. So, we're really excited about this project. I think one thing that we did notice was that because of the, there is some detention on the site for, for the adjacent neighborhoods, and we thought it'd be a great opportunity to look at opportunities where, right now, the detention system right now is somewhat open. There is some erosion control and stormwater control, but it directly channels right into the Colorado River. So because of BIIPP's interest in education, one of the things we thought about, as well as because of the, the existing detention system here, we thought it was a great opportunity to introduce some bioswells into filtration systems that could be utilized as not only to, to filter and clean and control some erosion and stormwater that goes into the Colorado, but also serve as an educational point for the, for the users of the park itself. This is, this is also a rendering of some feedback we got from, from staff as well as from BIIPP committee members. This is a bermed amphitheater, which would be adjacent to the bioswells cell. Its location is kind of generally in this little part over here. There's that existing bridge that's over here, and then there's the trail that goes off to the, the overlook along the river. But this rendering kind of represents what could be utilized for music in the park. Activities could bring people from downtown into the park itself for different activities, as well as potentially opportunities where for screens to be put down for movies in the park at night and so forth. So again, it's an idea of, that we pulled from feedback we got from BIIPP to introduce an amphitheater and other, and other amenities throughout the park. And this is kind of representative of just the general, one of the major components of the master plan experience that we had was public engagement. I think something that Diana had spoken on, and, and some of you actually participated. And so we, we really appreciated the, the interest from the community in the vision for this park. There was some really exciting ideas that came through this experience, as well as just a lot of public engagement of children and other parents that were interested in having this a really exciting park to be part of Bastrop.
One last comment on the master plan. Okay, one last comment on the master plan. I just wanted to mention that Trey Jobb, he really encouraged us to look at the overall park, not just, you know, the new amenities. So we studied the existing system, as Eric said, with the drainage way and how to improve it, some ideas on what could happen on the out parcel, the corner, and how to tie it all together with his public works and infrastructure projects and parks and rec projects, how they could tie together. That's all I have.
So what was the conclusion of that?
To tie, to tie these projects together.
With the public works. What was, like, what are a couple of points tying the public works with the project?
Like where the existing water well is, there could, there need to be some improvements in that area, and how we could tie that in with an educational opportunity to teach about water resources, would be one.
Thank you very much, council. And does anyone have any questions? We appreciate your time.
I have a question. Because, um, one of the things that you talked about in that proposal was a pedestrian bridge that was, that would link some kind of way Fisherman's Park over to the back of Bob Bryant. And that looked really interesting to me, you know. I mean, I, it, just reading your whole proposal, I mean, to me, that looked like a starting point. You know, and I just wanted you to talk about that a little bit.
Sure. Well, one of the idea, we had, one of our first site visits to the park involved one committee member requesting that very interest. Ed, I forgot his last name. He's not here tonight? Oh, there he is. So we're going to put Ed on the spot because it was such a great idea. Ed, you want to come here? No, I'm just kidding. But anyway, we thought it was a really terrific idea. And we looked at opportunities where we could probably utilize exist, if it's something that the committee and the council wants to move forward on. We looked at opportunities where that could actually be facilitated. One idea could be is to utilize existing easements that go across, that connect both sides of the Colorado River. For example, there's a power line easement that goes across. And that could be a way that you could connect with that, because that land is definitely dedicated as for, for power, and could be utilized for trails and so forth. And so there are, it's a possibility that actually could be incorporated. And as Ed mentioned, there's, there's a great interest in the community for walking, as well as running. And being able to connect those two together would be a very powerful connection for the public. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, councilmember, oh, councilmember Ennis.
It's not in the master plan at this point, though. Right?
It's in the, it's in actually, in the, in the opportunity analysis part of the packet itself. It's not in the presentation for today.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jones, did you have any other questions? Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Okay, now we're at item 6B, and it's time for the mayor's report. And Andreas has a couple pictures he's going to put up for me. And my mayor's report was a part of the packet. So if some of you at home, or if you've already looked at the packet, you'll see most of these things, but I was going to still cover a few of them. Obviously, with councilmember Nelson on board with us now, we did have our historic first runoff election, and I want to congratulate Mr. Harrell and Mr. Nelson both. I don't think either one of them were counting on that many more weeks of campaigning, and I can tell you by experience, it's exhausting. Last Friday was a really busy day. I started with BDC's coffee chat, and there were quite a few of us. And Main Street, Ms. O'Brien, and the BDC staff was there, and we had several people. Then I went to the Ferry Park ribbon cutting, which was, I think, one of the first times, first time we've had a ribbon cutting at a park in, in quite a while, and that was great. I also attended, Cherry Blossom Spa had their seven-year anniversary party, and I love it when local businesses do well. And I was excited for them, so I spent a little bit of time there. And then we went to the, several of us went to the Juneteenth banquet. Thank you very much to councilmembers Peterson and Ennis, who joined the city manager and I. We were at the Juneteenth banquet. And then we had, it was time for the parade the next day. Go to the other one, please. And there's our very first city float. Yay, public work. You will see on the city float that we had councilmember Schiff and his wife. We had councilmember Ennis and Dan Hayes Clark with us. We had, I had the privilege of being driven by the city manager, and we were in the car in front of the float, and we had a great time. So I hope, I hope you got to see that. And then the second picture, after the parade, I read the city and county joint emancipation proclamation, and councilmember Ennis and Peterson joined me, and the city manager was with us. And yes, in case you were wondering, it was very hot. That's why we're all in our stylish shorts, but it was hot. And then because Linda and I want to get as many things done as we can in a day, between the parade and the proclamation, we ran over to the library for the Bastrop Art and Public Places celebration, where there were over 70 people in attendance at the library. So if you haven't already, notice all of the artwork around town. It's just one of the great things about living in Bastrop. Then last Tuesday, I attended the Rotary Luncheon, where Judge Poppy gave an overview for Bastrop County. And suddenly, it was Wednesday night, and try, and time for us to drive to the thriving metropolis of Hutto. And our council, our city manager had never been to Hutto before, but she got us all there safely and won the door prize. So she now thinks Hutto's an okay place to go. We were at the TML Region 10 meeting, and I'm not sure if councilmember Jones agrees with my math, but councilmember Jones was with us. Councilmember Ennis was with us. The city manager and I, councilmember Peterson made it, and so did, um... Is that everybody? That's our five? We, so we were five, and they give an attendance award at every meeting. And the people who won had eight, and there was nobody there with seven. And the city secretary was going to join us, but she got six that, sick that afternoon. So in my mind, we were at six. So I came home and said, "We were this close to winning." And councilmember Jones pointed out, we probably weren't that close. But it was, we made quite an appearance, and they, I think we all learned a lot.
Thorndale had more people than we did.
Yeah. And I'm also still doing the summer reading program, so I put the challenge out for the summer reading program. But the, I've saved the absolute best thing for last. In the time that I have been mayor, not every email or phone call is to tell me what a wonderful place Bastrop is and what a fantastic job the city council is doing. And, see, sometimes you get good news, And see, sometimes you get good news, sometimes you get bad news. This past week, I got fantastic news. I got an email, an official letter from an attorney in El Paso that could not say enough nice things about our police and fire departments. And I want to give them a round of applause. I won't bore you with the story. It's kind of interesting. It involves Boy Scouts and leaving the campsite and hitchhiking and you get the general gist. But the good news is that they were properly treated by our fire department, fire and rescue and by our police department. And as the gentleman said, I thought this was great. Good judgment comes from experience and a lot of things that come from bad judgment. Thankfully, they're all safe. So I'm glad that that worked out well. So real quickly, looking ahead, we've got ribbon cutting coming up. We've got the Downtown Business Alliance Happy Hour. There will be a city council budget workshop meeting. It will be held in these chambers on Thursday at 6:30. And Friday, can you believe it, it is June 30th and we're at the end of the month. That morning, I'll be at the countywide best breakfast. And then that evening, if you are running the 5K, I will be doing the volunteer work to help get the race ready. I do, I am officially registered for the race. There will be no racing. I will be walking and if anyone would like to walk with me, you're very much welcome to do that. Then Saturday morning, we'll have the Pet and Pow Parade and we've got Patriotic Festival going on all day Saturday. And then my friend Terry Moore will kill me for this, but she's singing at the Farm Street Opry next week, so you need to put that on your schedule. And then suddenly it'll be Friday, July 7th and time for the First Friday Art Walk. And then on July 11th, our council meeting will start early that night. We'll be starting at 5 o'clock to have our second phase of our ethic ordinance review. That'll be a workshop and the public's welcome to attend and make comments and help us come up with a good, good ordinance. So I hear that people are keeping track, so I only say this because I've had several people ask me today. From May 17th to this afternoon, I'm at 44 events. And the last thing that I have on my notes is for those of you who are applying for hot phones, the deadline is Friday, June 30th at 5 o'clock. So please get all of your information in. And with that, I will start on this side. Councilmember.
Yes, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to the city of Bastrop for helping to make our Juneteenth festivities a great event, a great parade, a great time. I want to please, thanks to the YMCA that helped out over at Currie Center. We had a lot more children over there that had fun during the day and learning what Juneteenth is all about. And we had a grand car show. And again, I just want to say thanks to all of the city employees that came to our aid and helped us make that weekend a success. Thanks again.
Great. Councilmember Nelson, what have you been doing since you've been elected?
I was recently sworn in and I have nothing, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Schiff?
Well, I've got to say that I'm just totally exhausted just reading the list of activities that our mayor has gone to in the last 40, whatever it is, for 30 days, 40 days, whatever. Anyhow, I think she deserves a big round of applause. That's it for me.
That's, that's very sweet. I wonder what he's going to want from me later, but I appreciate that. It comes with the job, comes with the job. Councilmember Ennis?
Well, after the mayor's report, I don't have much to report on either, but I would like to say, for those of you who did not come to the parade and see the city float, our Trey Jobe put together an incredible collection of songs, boogie songs. And our staff are very accomplished boogiers. So next time, make sure you come to the parade because they'll, they'll probably be up there dancing again.
Councilmember Jones?
I went to the Flamingo troupe that was at the Opera House on Saturday night and it is truly one of the best shows I've ever seen in my life. It was amazing and it makes me so proud. And I just want to shout out to Chester Ices, who's just dedicated over 35 years to that Opera House. I'm so, we're just really fortunate as a community to have him. He's done so much over there. And thank you to David Bragg, who is, aren't you the president? Thank you so much for bringing that troupe to Bastrop. It was, I was embarrassed at how much I paid for my ticket. I would have paid three times that much and been thrilled to be there. It was awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. I wasn't able to attend that, but I heard you, everyone said it was just fantastic.
I don't have a report, but in that vein, I do want to share my time with David Bragg so he can recognize the award that Chester has received on a national level. And I too want to echo what Councilmember Jones said about the Flamingo program. It absolutely was by far one of the best programs I have seen anywhere. It was amazing.
Chester has been involved with the Opera House for 30, either 32 or 35 years. And for much of that time, he was the backbone, heart, soul and liver of the Opera House because there were very little people, very few people actually helping. He has more help now, but he's being recognized by the National American Association of Community Theater, being given a special recognition award, which is given to two or three people nationally each year. And right now, he's in Minneapolis getting ready to accept the award. I can tell you from personal experience, I've never seen a person more dedicated to community theater and more dedicated to Bastrop than Chester is. And what he's been able to do at the Opera House has been phenomenal. The troupe that you mentioned, after the show was over, and they did blow the house off the Opera House. I gotta admit that, they really did. They came up to me and they thanked us for inviting them to the Opera House and said, can we please come back? And I said, thank us? We thank you for being here, you know. But they, they loved the venue and that is something that we can thank a lot of people for, primarily Chester, for preserving that venue. And a lot of us are working hard now to keep it going. So thank you all for the kind words about the program.
Thank you, Mr. Bragg. All right, we're now on to work sessions and briefings. We're at 7:00 A., discuss communications plan in the event of a high water event.
Mayor and council, you're going to get the joy of a tag team this evening. I believe that Wesley Brandon is going to kick it off and somewhere in there, Trey Jobe is going to participate as well as Chief Adcock. One of the things that we have recently done in light of the fact that it has the potential to be a fairly active hurricane season, it caused us to put together internally a plan of action on preparedness. And so we wanted to share it with the public because it very definitely is a partnership. We want to talk about what we're going to do and then we need to educate the community on what we really need help with from them in that way. So I think you're going to be pleased at the comprehensiveness of this presentation and they've worked very hard.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council, Ms. Umble. Yes, we thought it'd be a good time to talk about how, you know, really the three main things that go into emergency management and that is trying to answer what it is we're preparing for. You know, what kind of storm events have we seen in the past and what do we want to make sure that we can handle as effectively as possible in the future? Then also the question of what are we doing to prepare for it? How are we maintaining our, our system and how are we improving the system so that it can handle those events more effectively? And then also understanding that those events are going to happen at some point. We also need to put a lot of thought and effort into how we respond to an event like that. So just real quickly, we'll talk about kind of where the, the major watersheds throughout the city and kind of trying to explain where, where storm water comes from when we have, when we have these rain events. We'll kind of talk about how those storms affect our existing drainage capacity and kind of differentiate between the different types of infrastructure that we have and the fact that it's, some infrastructure is built to handle different issues than others. And then, like I said, what, what we're doing to be prepared and then what, what citizens in the community can do to be more prepared. This is a map. I apologize if it's not showing up very well, but this is trying to illustrate the, the area and the size of the watersheds that we have throughout the city. Down here at the very bottom is kind of the city limits. This is where our public works facility is and there's a detention pond outside of that. But there's, there's two major watersheds that are, that drain water from the east side of the city into Colorado River. There's the Piney Creek watershed, which is about 38 square miles of area that extends all the way up to State Highway 290. And so it, it creates a significant amount of flow when, when we have storms that, that fall within that area. And we also have the Gil's Branch watershed, which is about a tenth of the size. It's, it's about three square miles that drains another significant area east of the city. And then also, once you get on the other side of the river, most of this water kind of starts up at the north and drains to the south into the, into the river. This is an overall area of the Colorado River watershed, which is roughly 39,000 square miles. This is, this is important because there's, there's two problems that we can deal with depending on where the rain falls in those watersheds. You know, we see storms that don't even occur within the city. They occur well north of the city, but they still produce that high flood stage that comes through the city. Then there's, and so that's, that's kind of why we, we compare those versus the, the storms and the issues that we deal with when we have storms within those other watersheds. So this is a graph that we use to help us kind of compare the, not only the storms that we've had, but also the typical design standards that most engineers use when they, when they design infrastructure to handle the, the rain from these storms. On, on this side, this, these graphs kind of show the way rainfall accumulates over a certain, certain time period. These storms all reflect some of the previous storms that we've had over the last few years. This red, this red line is illustrating how the Memorial Day of 2016 storm came through. So we got roughly 8.3 inches of rain in nine hours. And we can all think back of, and think of the damage that we had because of that storm. And it's, the way I, I try to explain it is if you think of water that's inside a bucket, there's kind of two factors that determine how the water gets out of that bucket. There's how much water is in there and how fast you dump it out. And we've see, we've seen different types of storms that are kind of on both sides of that spectrum. This, this line is the storm that we had on Halloween weekend in 2015. So you can see, we, we got roughly seven and a half inches, but the, the difference with this storm is the rain fell over almost 33 hours. And so it was kind of like having a lot of water in the bucket, but dumping it out very slowly. And so we really didn't see much damage from that storm. And then you, of course, compare to these, these shorter storms, but the fact that we got so much rain over that, that short time period, it's kind of like having a lot of water in the bucket and dumping it out really fast. So these lines kind of show the typical storm that most engineers design for when they produce plans for the infrastructure that you see around town. There's typically what we call the 100-year storm, which in our case is roughly 10 inches that falls over 24 hours. And so when we get storms that produce, it may be less rain, but if it falls in a much shorter time period, you can still have an overwhelming impact to the system because the system's designed to have this more gradual flow and rain accumulation over, over 24 So just some examples of what infrastructure that's designed to handle a 100-year storm are our larger channels, our concrete channels that are just, they're designed to handle a lot more water. They're, you know, the bridge crossings that you see around town, or they're the larger pipes. These are some pictures that are actually out at our industrial park that, that show. I think this is a five foot diameter pipe. And so they're just much larger in size and they can, they're designed to handle, handle more flow. And then here's some driveway culverts that are, you know, they can be between 12 and 24 inches. They're just not designed to handle the kind of water that, that you would typically see with a, with a larger rain, rain event. And Mr. Jobe will kind of talk about what we're doing to, to prepare for these events. You know, we, we try to separate the, the work that we do to address the, sort of the immediate and short-term issues that could be anything from just routine maintenance to other improvements in the system to help accommodate maybe not those, those larger events, but at least those, those smaller events that, that still tend to produce that nuisance, nuisance standing water. And then in the long term, of course, we're conducting several different studies to identify larger projects that we need to undertake in order to effectively manage those, those, those larger storms. We're also working on preparing a digital inventory of our stormwater infrastructure so that we can know what we have and make, use that information to make better decisions in the future. And then we're also looking at ways to amend our development codes to be more appropriate for different areas of the city to, to account for the different issues that different areas of the city deal with.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I figured out why they invited me to participate. I get to be the comic relief and, and show all the pictures. So these guys got all the facts and the safety stuff down and I'll just take pictures and tell people what to do. So the work that we've done over the past 12 months for the immediate short term is a, forgive me for this map, so I had to blow it up quite a bit, but there was about 77 properties affected in the flood during, or in the storm event during Memorial Day. Since then, we've went to each individual place and made sure that the drainage was improved, culverts were replaced, area inlets were installed when we cleared and removed debris. So each one of these have been addressed on a local level. And again, some of the stuff Wesley was talking about, we'll, we'll pick up on it again later. This is just an example of the guys putting some in-house local drainage improvements. Again, you can see the catch bases that were installed, the culverts, street crossings and things of that nature. More recently, we've done some work, if you look at the yellow line here in Gil's Branch, quite a few people have noticed and made comment of that. And it's just removing and cleaning debris so that we can have the best flow possible in case we have a quick event. So while it won't address the 100-year flood concerns, what it will do is make water move a little easier and quicker. So I, you know, at first, I think we snuck in there and did it overnight. So I had read on Facebook, a lot of people were concerned about the prehistoric beaver of Bastrop roaming the streets and grinding all these trees up in Gil's Branch, but I wanted to put everybody at ease tonight and just say it's your friendly neighborhood municipal worker and here's some of the equipment that they use. So again, you've had a, you've got a mowing and mulching head attachment there. And you've probably seen this thing around town. It's the new grade hall that we purchased last year. And you can see some examples at Gil's Branch. So before, after, before and after. Picture's a little dark, but you can see that it's much clearer, it's chewed up all the brush, anything that was in the way and would block the drainage. So what we've been doing is regaining the drain, cleaning and clearing brush, replacing undersized culverts, checking on the storm sewers prior to the event, again, immediately after an event, going back and making sure everything's clean and clear, checking the detention ponds. And then we're going to have a conversation with council on Thursday about how we're going to help pay for all this stuff in the future. So some of those capital improvements that Wesley was talking about.
Trey?
Yes?
Councilmember Jones is asking, where is that, where is that location in town?
This here is Pine Street. So if you, directly behind Bernard's top.
Why don't you talk about the two preventative measures if we were to get a rain event and it backed up what you're going to do?
So if we, if we were to get a rain event of any significant size, let me go back to this map because it'll help explain it. You can see this is Pine Street here and this is Gil's Branch and this is City Hall. Basically, everything drains in and chokes down at Pine Street. I think the cubic feet per second moving through that is, is somewhere around 23,000. It's quite a bit of water. And the infrastructure there is built for that 25-year storm Wesley was talking about. So in the event something were to happen, we're going to make sure all of this is clean and clear and wide enough and then we'll take a section out of Pine Street to make sure that the water can pass through. We'll just go in, cut it out before the storm and block off the road and let the water pass right on through so we can get it to the river as quick as possible and out of pass right on through so we can get it to the river as quick as possible and out of... We'd also talked about doing the same thing at Shiloh in the event of that happening. I don't know if Mr. Hamler's listening, but here's your warning. We're going to cut Shiloh Street to future. So we'll work that out with the county. But we think that will help and take care of the immediate need. But yeah, this is the Pine Street ditch. To your left would be Bernard's Tire, and that's the culvert structure I was talking about. So what they've done is just cleaned that up to make sure that everything flows, and we're in good shape. Oh, this is the chief. Sorry.
Thank you, Trey. Chief Adcock.
Excuse me for my voice. We have trigger points that we go by when we have a flood event, or actually, any kind of event, tornado, whatever it may be. But we're talking about floods right now. The Office of Emergency Management, we monitor things, we monitor the storm, but we also have to monitor the river. While we're not really, the river's really not a big deal for us. It's more localized flooding. The river is usually days down the road because we get all the rain up from Austin or something like that. But our localized rain, Smithville and La Grange and all of them have to deal with what we have. So it's kind of unique as far as the river goes. But we do monitor with LCPA. They're the ones who keep up with it. They're also the ones who will predict the crest. Just to give you all numbers, because it hasn't been in there yet, I just want to let you all know that the Memorial Day flood, the river level was thirty-one point zero six. The Halloween flood of fifteen was thirty-six point one seven. I was not here in ninety-one, but I was in central Texas, and I remember that flood. It was thirty-seven point four eight. So in ninety-one, the river was the highest it's ever been since the dams have been put in up around Austin. Excuse me. So what we'll do is, it's my responsibility to keep up with what's going on as far as do we have more rain on the way, what's the amount. It's not a science, it's a prediction. And at some point in time, I will then put police and fire on standby and Public Works. Trey's very good about going ahead and mobilizing his barricades and stuff. We'll put them at different points in the city because, you know, unfortunately, we've had to deal with this on multiple occasions. So he also has barricades that we have ready. We've worked many a times with the county, county OEM, Mercy Management for the county, and the commissioners with the county. They're all ready. It's honestly, it's kind of amazing to watch when it kicks into gear between the city and the county, how flawless everything works. Some of the trigger points, at fourteen feet, we close the Riverwood Crossing. We know that that's going to flood, so we automatically close it. Our side is the city, that side is the county, we take care of it since, you know, it's so close to us. At twenty-four feet, we notify KOA. I have visited with KOA many, many, many a times. They know exactly what they're doing. They're very well-versed on it, so they're very good at that. We actually went and visited with them earlier, or late last week on everything. And they have different categories, you know, because the KOA, it has different levels, but they know exactly what they're doing and when to do it. At thirty feet, we start notifying, there's a few homes off Perkins, there's two homes on this side, and there's a couple on the other side. So we know exactly what we need to go do, we know which homes those are. And those are really the only homes from the river that we have to worry about. At thirty-five feet, that's when we're going to utilize the Code Red, and I'm going to explain the Code Red in just a minute, but thirty-five feet is when you're going to start getting flooding, not other homes, but you're going to start getting flooding to where streets are going to be closed down. You're not going to be able to get into Austin. If everybody remembers, we couldn't get into Austin. So we're going to start utilizing the Code Red. I also want to go over how to do Code Red. Code Red is our emergency notification system. We have had it on our website. I have no idea how many times. It's been in the paper multiple times, and for some reason, people still don't know about it. So you just go to WarrenCentralTexas.org, and it's very simple to register. But what this does is, anytime we set the system off, we can set it off, or the county can set it off. When they set it off, it'll call your phone, it'll send you an email, it'll send you a text, and I'm going to go over that. But that is the way we're going to notify. The days of setting off the horn downtown is over. The days of us going door-to-door is over. We use that. And obviously, if we have to go door-to-door, we will, you know, under situations.
Chief Adcock, I don't know if this may be an unfair question, but do you have a way of knowing how many people have registered?
Yes, I do. And I do not know how many, and I'm going to explain why in just a second, why I don't know. Okay, it's on the CAGCAG website, or you can just go to WarrenCentralTexas.org, and it takes you to that. But if you'll go over here, I'm afraid to hit the pointer, I don't know which one it is. If you'll go to where Homeland Security right there and click on that, or you can go to the register here and click on that, it'll take you to this page. All you do is put your name and your address, and when you put your address in, that tells the system where you're at. So you can, anybody can use this in the CAG region. The whole CAG uses it, the Austin CAG uses it. So if you have parents that live in Austin, you can register, but you put your parents' address in there, and if they set it off in Austin, it'll call you, okay? So if you, whatever the address is, that's what you go by. I live about a mile outside the city limits. I have two addresses. I have my home address, and then I have my address for City Hall. So that way, if something happens and they only set it off for the city limits of Bastrop, I still get it. So it's all about your address. You can have your kids that live in Utah, and they can register, and anytime it goes off here, they'll get the text message. But make sure they put the address of, you know, your address here in the city. But it's very simple to go through, and right up here is where if you want to get a text message, and it'll only send you one. Down here, where you really need to check these boxes, tornado, severe thunderstorm, flash flood is whether you want to or not. And the reason why, those are automatically sent. The county and the city does not send those out. When there's a tornado warning from the weather service, it's an automatic send-out, and so you will get it automatically, or severe weather, thunderstorms. It's up to you, the general notification, what that is, if we find the need to do a water bowl. That's going to be more of a general notification. Excuse me. That's a general notification, so therefore, if you don't click on it, you're not going to get those. We will not and do not use this for anything except for any type of public safety issue. Okay. Does anybody have any questions with me? One more thing I want to say, and it's on the very last slide, is we get a lot of people who automatically call the Sheriff's Department, or now it's dispatched through the county, and they want to know, is the road open between here and Elgin, or here in Austin, or wherever? You are completely inundating that dispatch, and they can't do their job. You can go to ATXfloods.org, or dot com, excuse me, ATXfloods.com, and that will give you every single road in this area. And we, as soon as we close a road, we notify them. So it's very updated. So you can do that. You can find out if you can get to Nebronfields, or San Marcos, or Austin, at ATXfloods.com.
All right, I have a question. I just, I have a, it's for Trey, or Wesley, I'm not sure, but there's citizens watching at home, and I got a text from one of our citizens, and he's asked me to have you please respond to what y'all are doing about flooding on North Hill Street.
North Hill Street. So that's exactly what we're going to talk about. So this is what the city's preparing for. Currently, we're doing the routine maintenance, the ditch cleaning, clearing, mowing, debris removal, culvert replacement, things of that nature. Just one thing I'd like to point out, actually Wesley and I talked about this, and we talked about Pine Street and the CFS, that's cubic feet per second of water that are traveling through that intersection. It being about twenty-two thousand CFS, that's about approximately what the city of Bastrop uses in drinking water a month, going through there every minute. So that's sixty million gallons a minute that travel through there. So for the entire year's worth of water, the entire city drinks, or all our customers drink on the water system, goes through there in twelve minutes. That's a massive amount of water, so a lot of people need to soak that in. That's a lot of gallons per minute when your average house uses fifteen gallons per minute. Again, so as part of our master plan to answer the citizen's question, what we're doing is working, Wesley's talked about this earlier, we have two studies that are going on, and let's go back to this one. And these studies that are going on are actually HDMP projects that have already been submitted to the state or to FEMA for funding. That's a seventy-five-twenty-five match. These grant applications have been submitted, we're resubmitting. And what that will do is, by increasing the detention pond at Public Works, it will actually stop the... That's probably my fault. I got excited about the beaver and lost my train of thought. So, yes, Appen Associates there, if you'll look, they're actually completing the drainage study. It will be completed in early September, just in time for budget, so we can talk about all those capital improvement projects that we want to do. It spent several months in the, at the Texas Water Development Board waiting on approval. It finally was done. Again, we're anticipating it in September. We have a list of projects and the priority list based on the greatest benefit for the overall community. That pond actually at the, which we talk about here, increasing detention pond at the Public Works, will actually help, I think, twenty-eight to thirty of those homes on Hill Street and the north side of town that are in that Piney Creek area. The rest are Gills Branch. So that's a huge bonus what you get for that amount of money that you spend. And what they'll do basically is deepen the pond, collect the water for the hundred-year storm, and then we'll go out and manually pump it when the system can handle it at a slower rate. Again, Newton Street is something else that was applied for. That is, if everyone knows where Newton Street is, it's just the other side of, south of Highway seventy-one. And they're going to increase some culvert sizes under the railroad to let the water come out a little quicker. That's got its own challenges, getting a permit from the railroad. And then Pine Street, which we just talked about, and the channel improvements, and the amount of water that goes through there. So this is just too small to handle that amount. So what happens is, Gills Branch backs up in this area, essentially, everything falls to the south, but then it also falls to the west when it overflows its banks. So it runs to the convention center, it runs to the railroad tracks, and then the railroad tracks is another natural dam, and the water has to come up above the tracks before, and that's when people start to flood. So by taking care of the problem in it, backing up, and getting into the river as quick as possible, as long as we don't have one of those events Wesley talked about, that we're north in the rivers at thirty-six feet, we should be in really good shape, so.
Trey?
Yes, sir.
Over here. We've already applied for those grants from FEMA.
We have.
What's our anticipated notification?
We had that discussion today with the engineer, and I do not recall the date, but I want to say it was early next year. Was it January of twenty-eighteen?
Yes, on the FEMA house buyback, we submit at the end of July. The state, all of the FEMA grants that were submitted in October, which ours were, have not even been reviewed by the state. There were so many. The engineer anticipates that that will occur by December of this year, so we're still in the hurry-up-and-wait stage, just because of the backlog of the need that's being submitted that they have to review to then forward to the federal government.
And what's important to remember about that is it's a seventy-five-twenty-five match, so that the federal funds will pay for seventy-five percent, and you're only going to have an impact of twenty-five percent on the ratepayers and the citizens of Bastrop. So to finish up, what these guys did a great job on is, we all want to join Code Red. This is what your citizens should be doing. We talked about what we were doing, but this is what we should all be doing as citizens. And that's join Code Red. Once we come behind and get the creek clean and clear, anything you can do to make sure it's maintained and cleaned and mowed and easy access, don't throw anything in there, you know, we don't want to dump things in there. We still have a river and a watershed to take care of. We're going to have sandbags available for you. So if in the event there's a flood and you're, join Code Red, and you get a beep on your phone, and all of a sudden you need sandbags, you can come down to Public Works, Chardet, 1119 Linden, we'll have bags there. We'll probably even help you load some sand in them, load them in the truck, and you're good to go. If, in the event, we haven't already taken care of everything and you need it, so this is what we're hoping to do. Again, if you're worried about a road crossing, like the chief mentioned, you don't want to overwhelm that dispatch, they've got other things to do to make sure people are getting taken care of and rescued and putting out fires and dispatching police. You can go to Austin TX, or ATX Flood Alerts. Again, this is the Warren Central Texas, and then BioWeatherRadio. And then during the storm event, monitor your TV, your local channels, watch the weather. And then you can also go to the Hydromet, the LCPA. It's a great tool. I don't know if anybody's been on there, but it tells you how fast the river's going, when they're expecting it to rise, what that looks like, and they'll absolutely, it's real easy to follow, and it's a great tool. I would suggest everybody at least visit these sites. And I'm sure that if somebody's looking for this, I know it's available on the city's webpage now. So if you want to come back and get that information, you can pull this packet. And the main thing is be prepared, get some batteries, you know, things of that nature. So, are there any questions for me? I do. So, excuse me. So this is what the citizens need to do. You want to make sure you can save yourself. When there's rushing water, you need to be alert to your surroundings, monitor your local media like we talked about, avoid driving if you can. There's nothing worse than when a really big storm comes out and crews are trying to clear roads and there's extra traffic because everybody's just driving across the bridge, for instance, to see how the river's getting. That makes it hard to travel back and forth.
I'm not going to weigh in, but I am going to put in a plug for first responder. The one thing that just drives me to drink as a city manager is putting the lives of first responders in danger because you want to go out and look when we need you to stay at home. With social media, we'll post pictures if it's interesting, but please, don't put yourself in harm's way so that our first responders have to be put in harm's way. They want to go home to their families, too. Please, stay at home. Avoid driving, please.
So again, stay away from the creeks, trails, culverts, the ponds, other drainage infrastructure. Just last year, or just in that last flood at Memorial Day, they had some families are still searching for in San Marcos near the river. So that's the kind of stuff you want to stay away from. It's not safe. Again, stay home. And if the water starts to rise, seek higher ground, and that may mean getting on the roof. We'll come back and get you off, so.
Excellent job, all three of you gentlemen. Thank you very much. Very informative. Does anyone on council have any questions? Thank you very, very much. I'm wondering how many of you sitting in the audience have already registered on Code Red? I'm hoping you're doing that. Okay, we're on to staff and board reports. Receive presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending May thirty-first, 2017. Ms. Waldron.
Good evening. Let's see if I can get this to Warren. Oh, look at her. I'm not going to tag team, it's just me. This is the report, period ending May thirty-first. These are the two city economic development incentives. This is the summary of the agreements and the remaining balance that we still have to pay out on these. Summary of our legal fees, as you can see, fiscal sixteen-seventeen is significantly down from the two previous years. Summary of our major funds, all of the funds are in favorable status. They all are tracking along with the budget. I'll go over some highlights. This is general fund, total revenues. Right now, fiscal seventeen is above fiscal sixteen, and I had the number written down. By approximately one-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand of previous year-to-date, expenses are almost dead even from last year. Sales tax, we are slightly above where we were last year, year-to-date, and, actually, that's one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand. Ad valorem is thirty-three thousand over where we were year-to-date last year. This is grouped by function, so the bottom will explain how the departments are grouped, but overall, this is how they line up against fiscal sixteen year-to-date. Water wastewater funds, right now, revenue is over expense by about four-hundred-and-forty, four-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. As I said before, they're all tracking along with budget. This is just a breakout of revenue. Revenue's... Revenue's over where it was last year at this time. Expenses are actually below where we were last year at this time. Electric fund, not a whole lot of data, but it's, budget right now, electric is actually a little below the budget, but summer months are usually higher than other months, and so I expect it to catch up with budget over the next couple of months. Hotel motel tax revenue. So, on the revenue, I did not do a year-to-date. I did a month-to-month comparison just so we could see how the hotels are taxes collected from a month-to-month comparison. So right now, we're just slightly above where we were last year, and expenses for this year have been below where we were last year. And that is all I have. If you have any questions for me?
Great job. Any questions, anybody? You did so good, Tracy. We don't have any questions. Thank you, Ms. Waldron. Okay, we're now to citizens' comments.
Mayor, city manager, and esteemed council members. Appreciate the opportunity to address you. Number one, I made this bench out here for the, for the city when they opened this new, and it's kind of tattered. I would like to be able to remove that for one day and put another finish on it and bring it back. It's okay. I'll check with, when I do it, I'll check with somebody. But anyway, in 2011, we, we were living in Dickinson, Texas, on the coast in, on the coast in, by Galveston down there, and Ike took our house away completely. There was nothing left but the toilet. One came out, the slab and the toilet. But we were, the Lord blessed us with the opportunity to be able to come up here to Bastrop. My brother had bought a place that he had just passed away, so we were able to move here, and that's been a blessing, saved my life. Anyway, we live on Renegade, Renegade Road. I was here about five years ago addressing the council with the same problem. We need to, I would like the council to maybe appoint someone to go up there and look at that road and make, and make some, and, and look at it again because there's some development up there and there's some other problems. It was declared, y'all declared it a private road for us here five years ago, but there's a lot of, a lot of problems up there right now. And I would sure like to, I would like to get that addressed, if at all possible. I'd be glad to show somebody around up there, you know. It's going to, I think it's going to take boots on the ground to, to look at it and just see what, what we got up there. And I'd sure appreciate any, any help y'all could give us up there.
Mr. Phelps, I'm watching you be written in on the city manager's to-do list, so.
Appreciate it. I'd sure like to be in this corner some way, but, thank you so much, okay? Is that, is that it? Okay, thank you so much.
And thank you for the bench. It's beautiful.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Madam Secretary, are there any other citizen comments? Okay, the good news, we're moving on to page three of five. We're at the consent agenda. I have three items for consent. Does anyone on the council need anything pulled? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll read the consent items?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 10A, consider action to approve minutes from the June 13th, 2017 meeting. Item 10B, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2017-17, granting a conditional use permit to allow a manufactured home at 1103 Cedar Street, being 0.289 acres of building block 20 east of Main Street, setting out conditions and establishing an effective date. Item 10C, consider action to approve resolution R-2017-40 of the City Council of Bastrop, Texas, terminating the land lease agreement with the Bastrop County dated February 17th, 2017, and authorize the city manager to enter into a land lease agreement with Bastrop County for property in the city's Mayfest Park, upon the county receiving authorization from the Texas General Land Office to use grant funds for a community center to be built by Bastrop County, Carolyn Dill, Mike Fisher, and establishing an effective date. That concludes the consent agenda.
I'm prepared for a motion.
I move that we approve all items on the consent agenda.
I second.
I'll second.
Okay, it was a race. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll?
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, we're now on to 11 items for individual consideration. 11A, receive update on the Phase 1 of the Culinary Arts District and Culinary Art District process and consider action to approve resolution R-2017-38 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for Phase 2 professional services with Signet Strategies utilizing existing fiscal year 2017 budgeted tourism promotion dollars in accordance with the city's purchasing policy and establishing an effective date. Hello, Ms. O'Brien?
Hello, Mayor, Council. It's my lucky day, luck of the Irish, Vicky Soderberg with Signet Strategies is actually in Bastrop County this week teaching at Tourism College out at the Hyatt Regent Sea Lost Pines, so I was able to pick her up this afternoon, so she's in the audience if you have any questions for her. I know many of our audience members, and they recognize her from the many community meetings and one-on-one stakeholder meetings that were held over the last few months. Hopefully you all received the summary report we sent out last week that completed Phase 1 of our Culinary and Cultural Arts District project. Over 60 individualized secret shopper reports were sent to businesses along Main Street, restaurants in the Culinary District, and attractions in the Cultural Arts District. A summary report of those findings and the 50-plus digital footprint assessments were included in your packets. I also included a copy of our online survey results when we did our initial research. I know everyone is as eager as I am to get our destination marketing organization up and running to market on the city's behalf, but the city's work isn't done yet. We must continue to take a proactive approach to manage how we define and market our tourism assets and products so that we don't disrupt the fabric of our community, and that's why we're here today to talk about Phase 2. The Culinary District and Cultural Arts District in downtown are the core of our destination, and it is essential for us to continue to work with what we have and enhance the visitor experience so that Visit Bastrop has the strongest product possible to market. Phase 2 of this project will enable us to further develop our existing assets and create a resilient tourism product for the DMO to market. As outlined in the proposal attached in your packets, the objectives, methodology, and deliverables will be used to define a clear identity for the downtown Bastrop experience and develop a collaborative, implementable product development plan for both the Culinary and Cultural Arts Districts. We anticipate Phase 2 being completed by the end of December, if approved tonight. Funding for this project is allocated in the current Tourism and Promotions Budget that was approved in November of 2016, and both the Main Street Program and the Economic Development Corporation will be contributing to Phase 2 as well. Be happy to answer any specific questions that you guys may have.
Council? Councilmember Ennis?
Are those, some of those funds hot funds? I know BEDC's dedicating some, but...
Yes, the $40,000 from the Tourism and Promotions Budget is hotel occupancy tax funds. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Accept a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll?
Councilmember Ennis?
Approve.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you. We're now moving on to item 11B. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2017-18 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas amending the code of ordinances by amending section 9.09.041, Emergency Fire and Rescue Services, authorizing the Bastrop Fire Department to seek reimbursement of costs of certain emergency fire and rescue services, approving a repealing clause and establishing an effective date, and move to include on the July 11th, 2017 Agenda for Second Reading, Chief Adcock.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance has been in for I don't know how long, I think it was '97, I think. All we have done is updated it since now that the Fire Department is wholly within, as a city department. We didn't make any other changes to the fee scales or anything like that. We just, the changes that we made are strictly administrative because it talks about where some, we divide the money up between the Inc. and the city and stuff like that. So that's all this is, is to clean that up, and then therefore we're going to move forward and start collecting on this.
Council, do you have any questions? Mayor Protem Schiff?
I just, I move that we approve this. It's an ordinance. I guess we approve it on first reading and have it put on the consent agenda for the next meeting.
I have a motion? Do I have a second? A second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll?
Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Madam Secretary. As mentioned earlier, item 11C has been pulled, so we will be moving to item 11D. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2017-15 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas amending the code of ordinances by amending Article 4.03, Taxi Cab, Shuttles, and Touring Vehicles, providing the requirements of operating a taxi cab, shuttle, and touring vehicles and designating the city manager or his or her designee to enforce all requirements, approving a repealing clause, establishing an effective date, and move to include on the July 11th, 2017 Agenda for Second Reading, Chief Adcock.
Mayor, before the chief moves forward with that, I want folks to know that 11C that was pulled this evening will be on the agenda on July 11th. So if there's interest or concern at home, just know it will be back on the next agenda.
Thank you, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We had this discussion in this presentation last time. Councilmember Jones had asked some questions, and I did go get that information. I've got from Uber and from Lyft, and I'd like to share that with you. Uber does not allow any criminal history of any kind. They do not, these are automatic disqualifiers. No DUI or drug-related offense, no incidents of driving without insurance or permit, no fatal accidents, no history of reckless driving, and no criminal history. Lyft, on the other hand, automatic disqualifiers for Lyft is any violent crime, any felony, any drug-related offense, any sexual offense, and then certain theft or property damage offenses. So comparing our, what we have proposed is, is actually quite a bit less. Now, I do not know if these folks follow this, I can't attest to that, but this was off their website, so I did get that information, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief Adcock. Does anyone have any questions for Chief Adcock? Seeing none, I'm prepared for a motion.
Wait, I have a question. Has, I think in the past, and I probably should have asked this question before the meeting, so I apologize. When we have ordinances, or when we set up new ordinances, it seems like there should be some sort of a review by our attorney or by an attorney that we might use who has expertise in municipal law. And so my question is, has this ordinance been reviewed so that if there's anything that might come up to someone who typically does municipal-type ordinances specific to taxis, that we could like get on the front of that?
Mr. Bragg?
I have reviewed it. You may recall, I did the extensive revision of this ordinance the last time when we were adding pedicabs to it. And so Chief Adcock and I sat down at the beginning of the process and went through it line by line, and I'm satisfied that it accomplishes what he's wanting to do.
Councilmember Jones, any other questions? I'm still ready for a motion.
I move that we approve this ordinance on first reading and put it on the consent agenda for the next meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll?
Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. We're now at 11E. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2017-42 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas authorizing the purchase of a parcel of land containing 1,663 square feet in the amount of $20,787.50 situated in building block four west of Water Street, according to the plat of the City of Bastrop, Texas recorded in plat cabinet one, slide 23A of the plat records of Bastrop County, and being a part of that tract described as 0.352 acre in a deed from Clyde Stevens to Kenneth Cruz dated December 3rd, 2003, and recorded in volume 1390, page 956 of the official records of Bastrop County granting the use of three parking places for exclusive use to the building located at 919 Main Street for a term of 99 years unless the building or parking lot is demolished, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase agreement, closing documents, and any document necessary to finalize the purchase of the property, approving a repealing clause and establishing an effective date.
Mayor and Council, our Public Works Director, Trey Jobe, is going to present these items as one, so that you understand the context of the project, and then we'll ask for you to vote on them separately.
And I just want to remind everyone, the two items she's speaking of is 11E and 11H because 11F and G have been pulled. Sorry, Mr. Jobe.
No.
You're on.
Go ahead. So 11E is this area, I know it's hard to tell from here, but directly behind Baxter's. And essentially, what the city's going to purchase this property here, what they'll do is give you two extra handicap spaces there in the parking lot, you know, the sidewalk where everybody walks generally is right here on your way to Main Street. What that does is make you ADA compliant on Main Street, and also adds two handicap parking spaces to the rear, and these, there's a few spaces that will be dedicated to parking for Ms. Raymond Davis. Here is the TS Hasler Track, just on LTD, and what they've decided to do is they're going to end up with a space as well in their, in their 99-year license agreement. Essentially, we'll end up with two spaces here, we'll add some additional spacing here. Because the items were pulled, we will add a few more spaces here, net gaining about five, seven spaces altogether, except, let me rephrase that, six spaces because this will actually go away. It will be dedicated to the, to the previous landowner.
And Mayor and Council, to provide some perspective, the reason that we recommend 99 years is these property owners were using this property as parking. There would have been a real resistance to allow the city to purchase that without it. We recognize that these parking spots are currently used for parking, they will continue to be used for parking, and these buildings would park in this parking lot, so being able to dedicate the parking solved a problem where we, A, wouldn't have gotten the property and would have to have used aggressive means to get it, which certainly wouldn't have been an ideal situation. Given the workload of our current... Given the workload of our current city attorney, because he is a party of one, we worked with the firm of Denton, Navarro, Rocha, Burnell, Hyde, and Zeke, and they are nothing but municipal attorneys. Several of the individuals and partners in the firm have previous city attorney experience. They were fine with the 99 years. This is written in a way that is a part of the deed, it will go with the building, not by property owner. So it would be our recommendation that you would approve the purchase of 11E and 11H. We're happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Nelson, I see your light on. Do you have a question? That would be a no. Mayor Protem Schiff? Anyone? Any questions? Yes, Councilmember Ennis?
Is this a going rate? I have no idea. What?
It is. What we did was we take, we took the most recent survey for the 921 lot that the EDC purchased, and that was 1,250 a square foot. We had actually gotten the survey the day prior to us making the offer.
The appraisal?
Yeah, the appraisal. So it was, it was as close as I think you're going to get without doing an additional appraisal.
I have, someone signed up, is there anything else you want to add, Mr. Jobe?
No.
I have someone signed up for both of these items for citizen comments. Glenn Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I was concerned about these four items, and only two are being considered today. I understand the public purpose of wanting to pave the entire area of the parking lot that's being built, but the way the deal is structured, and it's illegal, as the package indicates, to have a private, a city to improve private property, therefore, the idea was to buy the property. Unfortunately, what, what happens is, the property owners, property owner under Item E, gets paid the appraised value of their property. They continue the exclusive use of the property at no expense to them. They attain an improvement of the property that is now owned by the city that's adjacent to their building that they are entitled to park on, enhancing their property value for the next 99 years, and they have a permanently reduced tax burden. The city pays the owners for the right to use the land for a parking lot, but doesn't obtain the right for the citizens of the city to use those spaces. And the total for all four items was 11 spaces. This, this Item E is three spaces, and the other one is one space. But I don't know what the number of spaces is, but I counted up 70. I tried to go through the, a photo reduced copy of the plat. I may be wrong on the number of spaces, but that's 15% of the spaces are continued to be reserved at no cost to the persons who have received income by selling the property and have improved their property value by having their previously unpaid spaces paid. I just think that gives certain individuals a private, a private benefit that no one else receives. The other item, H, receives no compensation. I suppose that owner decided it was advantageous not to receive compensation and get the improvement to the parking space that they'll be able to use for 99 years. I just think it's something that ought to be looked at as to whether or not that amount should be charged to the city to improve private property owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I would just make the comment that, you know, I agree with Mr. Johnson that, you know, they are getting a benefit from this, but I also see that the city, the citizens of Bastrop are getting a benefit from this because those are three spaces that those building owners would be parking in, in this new lot, which was very, very expensive. If you look at, I don't know what the per-space cost was for the lot, but was our budget like almost $700,000 for that lot? If you look at on a per-space basis, I don't think these spaces are any more expensive than any other spaces, and we need every space we can get because we've had lots and lots of complaints, people needing to find parking places downtown, and we're trying to enhance the value where we've, we've invested as a, the city and the EDC has invested and will be investing substantial dollars in the repaving and new utilities going down Main Street. And the intent is, that's a jewel here of Bastrop, the whole Main Street effort that we have, and we have a whole Main Street group. This is just part of that, and it's, I think, an investment that we need to make.
Any other, oh, Miss Councilmember?
I would like to thank Chestnut Limited. I don't know if you want me to say who you are this evening, but I really appreciate that you've given that land to the city. That is just very generous, and I'm really proud to be associated with you all. Thank you very, very much.
Any other comments or questions?
I would move that we approve both the ordinance resolutions for 11E and 11H.
Okay, so since your motion is that, I need to read 11H so we can do them both at the same time. You can do that, or you can change your motion to be 11E and then I can read, and I don't care.
However you want to do, I kind of thought you wanted them together. You don't want them together?
Yeah, okay. So you get to listen to me read 11H. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R.2017-45 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing the purchase of land containing 454 square feet from Chestnut Street Limited situated in Building Block 4, west of Water Street, according to the plat of the City of Bastrop, Texas, recorded in Platte Cabinet 1, Slide 23A of the Platte Records of Bastrop County, and being a residual of the tract reserved to TA Hassler et al. to Maggie Olive dated September 28, 1908, and recorded in Volume 44, Page 63 of the Official Records of Bastrop County, granting the use of one parking space for the exclusive use to the building located at 707 Chestnut Street for a term of 99 years unless the building or parking lot is demolished, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase agreement, closing documents, and any document necessary to finalize the purchase of the property, approving a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date.
My former motion stands to approve both 11E and 11H resolutions.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Ennis?
My understanding is the, the option to acquire this land, if we didn't do it in this manner, would be eminent domain, would it not?
If it is the intent of the city to acquire it without paying for it, that would be the only option, yes, sir.
Well, then I would find this would be more advantageous.
We still have to pay for it.
She would have to pay for it.
Right.
Yes, you're not going to acquire it without payment, but if you don't do this transaction, then if you want it, then you have to go three court to get it, yes.
Oh, I would find that this would be a more advantageous option.
And Mayor, before you call for a vote, I believe Councilmember Jones needs to recuse from this particular vote.
Just for clarification, she doesn't receive income, she pays, so there is no financial benefit from her doing that.
Improving the quality of the lot was my concern.
Okay, well, that's your call, but this is not an income she pays to be there.
I understand that.
So Councilmember Jones has recused herself. Madam Secretary, will you call, there was no discussion, I think I remember I asked, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. Okay, we're on the last item, 11I. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R.2017-41 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming all board and commission appointments of the mayor as required in Section 3.08 of the city's charter as outlined in Exhibit A and establishing an effective date. I've got a PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to make, which, did we learn we can't, I can't click from up here, I got to go down there?
No.
Nice. And before I start, there's a couple of things I want to bring Counsel's attention to, and that is, you had placed at your spot this afternoon, Mr. Richard Kindred has requested that he be removed from consideration, so Mr. Kindred will no longer be considered. And if you look at your resolution on Page 1, under the Economic Development Board, it will, we will remove Mr. Kindred's appointment for Place 3 and instead put Sam Kerr in for Place 3. So when we have any motions on this, if it would please include those revisions, I would greatly appreciate that.
Goes into Place 1?
You'll see. It's fun to come. So in addition to the 44 events, I've spent more time on this than anything else, and there's a very good reason, it's a very important thing. And now we're going to see if I can make the, please, this way?
Sure.
Ha ha. Okay, so here's an overview, and for those of you that are at home, or those of you that are in the audience with your iPad, I had a pretty extensive email memo to all of the council, and this is just an overview of that, so if you want to read additional details, that is certainly available, and that was posted as a part of the packet on Friday evening. So for an overview, we have 15 boards. Those boards are compiled of 107 spaces. It's actually 103 spaces and four alternate spaces for a total of 107. There were 10 people occupying 22 spaces. That's over 20% of the places available by those boards. It is my opinion that our boards should reflect our community, and that, the way that you do that is that you have the geography, the gender, the race, the age. When you look at a board and you look at the community, I think they should be a reflection of each other. We had a long presentation, a very needed presentation, that went over the residency requirements for each of the boards. Some of them require that you be in the city limits, some of them require that you be in the ETJ, some of them allow you to be in Bastrop County. With those residency requirements, it means that there's over 10,000, well over 10,000 people that are eligible to serve on these boards. So before I looked at the very first application, I set some guidelines for myself, and here they are, and I, we all hate it when somebody reads verbatim from the, from the PowerPoint slide, but I'm hitting the high points. I want us to reflect our community, I want to maximize the number of citizens that are engaged, want to make sure that we know what we're trying to get done with each of the boards, we want to fill the spaces with the needed skills and knowledge, I want to address attendance issues. I, we have one particular board that has a nominating process, and their bylaws have a nominating process, and you have to have participated in their board as part of their committees in order to be on the board, and I wanted to be respectful of our boards that have those type of details and have recommendations and be respectful of the ordinances as they are in place. I also went to some of the boards, not all of the boards, but many of the boards have either a staff, well, they all have a staff liaison, some of them also have an executive director. So I spent some time with them and discussed with them, what are the strategies, what are the things that you're trying to get done, and is there a needed skill set on your board that you don't currently have? And then what I tried to do was, as I reviewed the applications, try to match those skill sets up with the applications. So, put all that through my mind, sat down, went through the applications, and I'd like to make the following appointments. This is Bastrop Art and Public Places. The terms will end in 2020. Bastrop Art and Public Places put forward their nominations, their board unanimously approved them on June 8 of 2017. Place 3 would be Matt Hart, Place 5 would be Diana Yens. You will notice that I've put when the term ends, and I've also put where each of these individuals live. For the Construction Standards Board, Joel Baumann was a alternate on the board last year, so I'm moving him to Place 3 to serve on the board. He lives in Hunter's Crossing. Cliff Copeland is being appointed to Place 5, which is currently vacant. Cliff owns his own heating and air conditioning, and the Construction Standards Board has a requirement where they want to have someone, you know, a plumber, an electrician, an HVAC person, and general contractors. There was no HVAC person, so that's fulfilling a needed skill on that board. On the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation, there are currently four vacant positions. With the adjustment that I talked about with Mr. Kindred removing himself, I am leaving Place 1 vacant, I'm appointing Sam Kerr to Place 3, Ron Spencer to Place 5, and Catherine Nash to Place 7. Please note that on the bottom, as mayor, I've chosen to not be on the board and instead will be the council liaison. In the past, this community has had varying opinions about having a mayor and several council members on, on that board, so I just want to clarify for everyone that with the appointments that I'm making, there are no elected officials sitting on the dais that will be sitting on the Economic Development Board. Some of you may or may not know these names. I'd like to take just a quick moment and speak to, Sam Kerr lives in the ETJ, he's in Tahitian Village. He had a pretty phenomenal career. His resume, I want to clarify something for the public, we did not include copies of the appointment application in the backup. You were able to see my memo and see all of that information, but we did not include each person's application that they filled out, and that was to protect their privacy. They are not, until they're confirmed, they're not a public official, and we wanted to be respectful of their privacy. But what we did do is there is the applications, and particularly with the Economic Development Corporation, there is a complete resume for each of the people, and all of the council members had access to those applications and to their resumes. So Sam retired from IBM, he was a part of the Rico IBM Joint Venture, he's got experience in mergers and acquisitions, chief financial officer, and all things financial. Ron Spencer lives in the ETJ, lives in the Colony, and he was recently graduated from the BEST leadership class, and some of you may or may not know what BEST is, but it's a pretty extensive leadership class that goes through all of, I'm seeing Assistant Chief James Altenfeld smiling because he too was a recent graduate of that class. It gives you lessons about the county, the municipal government, it's a pretty involved civics, extensive training about how cities run and what you need to do. Ron recently graduate, was a recent graduate of that. He retired from Dell Computer, so he has high-tech experience, and he also had over, has over 20 years of experience in economic development with various cities and port authorities, both in the US and internationally. He did that as a part of his resume back in the 70s. And in Place 7, Catherine Nash, Catherine lives downtown, she works for a Fortune 500 company called Cognizant, I believe they're number 206 on the Fortune 500 list. She has a bachelor's degree of education, she also has accounting and business management degree, college education, and was eligible to take her CPA, but I think she opted out, I don't think she's a certified CPA, but she certainly has the finance courses to go with that. She's skilled in project management, she's been a part of corporate branding and public relations, and one of the key that she brings to this board is that she's very involved in workforce education, and how to get our young people to where they are ready and available to be a part of the workforce, and that need is something- And that need is something that I've heard discussed a number of times with economic development, the, the chicken and the egg, we need the companies to come, the companies need us to have an educated workforce, so those are my appointments on the Economic Development Board. For the Ethics Commission, and I believe Judge Dugan has left, there is one place open, and I have reappointed Judge Dugan. Please note, and we talked about it earlier in the evening, on July eleventh, we'll be having our second workshop. The Ethics Commission has requested an increase in the number of members, but I'm not going to appoint anyone until that ordinance becomes a reality, and I know exactly how many places there are, but I, I want you to know that I'm aware that I expect there to be another couple of positions, and of the applications, when I went through the applications, I, I kinda squirreled away a couple, knowing that I think that's coming, so we'll be prepared to move forward with that. The Historic Landmark Commission, reappointing Blake Kaiser, he lives in Hunter's Crossing, he's a real estate professional, and I'm appointing Pat Crawford, she lives downtown, she's an owner of the historic residential structure, and I will say that this is one of the appointments that I got, a special request, that this was a needed skill on this commission, and that's why Pat is on this commission. The Bastrop Housing Authority, I spent some time with Brandy Spencer, I have, she has, she had two vacancies because somebody had moved away. I'm appointing Deborah Thorn Francis to place one. Deborah lives in what I call East Bastrop, I didn't know, I didn't wanna say behind Buc-E's, but basically, you know, east of, east, east, not downtown, east of downtown. She's got over twenty years of community resource experience. I'm also appointing Bernie Jackson to place two, or Reverend Jackson, as I like to refer to her, she lives in Riverside Grove, she has experience with the Housing Authority and currently works at the Family Crisis Center, so there's an excellent tie there to go from, unfortunately, some families that are in a crisis mode and a transition, and sometimes that Housing Authority becomes a, a good option to keep them in a safe environment. The next board is the Hunter's Crossing LGC, because that's the official name, but a lot of us call it the PID, the Hunter's Crossing PID. Brian Ryder is the developer, and, I'm sorry, let me go back, place one is the city manager, and it is in the bylaws that it's the city manager, so that's why I'm not doing place one, city manager umble gets that opportunity. Place two is Brian Ryder, he's the developer representative. Place three, I'm appointing Rick Womble as the commercial representative, he's with Roscoe State Bank. Christopher Conrad, I'm appointing to place four, he's a resident inside Hunter's Crossing. Place five, after extensive discussion, one of the things that we have discovered is there is the City of Bastrop, there is the Hunter's Crossing Homeowners Association, and there is the Hunter's Crossing PID, and there is not the very best communication between those three points. And one of the ways to clarify that and make sure that the PID's taking care of PID business, and the Homeowners Association knows what's going on, and to have some clarity, I've got some friends from Hunter's Crossing, and we've certainly seen that there's not always clarity there, but a means to make that happen is to make place five always be one of Hunter's Crossing's HOA board member. So, what I will do is contact, assuming that council confirms this, I will contact the Homeowners Association and ask them to go through whatever process, I don't, they may call a meeting, they may draw straws, but it will be one of their board members that sits on place five. And then, on place six, most recently sworn in, council member Lyle Nelson has been appointed to place six. I wanna take this opportunity to thank Mr. Peterson for having previously served on this board. I spoke with Mr. Peterson in advance, and he was supportive of Mr. Nelson taking over the role in place six. For the Library Board, these terms will end in 2020, and I wanna clarify, the reason I don't put any terms on this is there seems to be a little bit of confusion on the board creation documents, and I didn't wanna put something down that was wrong, so I punted and said that when they figure that out, then, then they'll know, because, you know, like Linda's term, the city manager is always gonna be the city manager for place one, so they'll be addressed, but I didn't wanna put incorrect information out there. For the Library Board, both of these women live downtown, and both of these women are reappointments, I spoke with Mickey, and he was really hoping that I would reappoint them. Rebecca Bennett, as I said, she lives downtown in place one, and place four is Barbara Clemmons. For the Main Street Advisory Board, please note on the bottom that the Main Street Nominating Committee went through an extensive process, and then the board unanimously approved the people that they brought forward from their nominating committee, and that is place four, Nassim Kansari, she lives downtown, this would be a reappointment. And then, place five, Shanda Hernandez, Shanda actually lives in the county, but she's been very active in their organizational committee, this is her first time to be appointed to the board, and so she can live in the county because that confirms the, that complies with the bylaws for Main Street Board. On the Parks Board, I'm appointing place two, Dorothy Scarnulus, did I say that right? I think I said that right, close enough, it's up there, it's, I know it's spelled right. She lives in Pecan Park, she would be taking care of a term that ends in 2019, she previously served on the Main Street Board. Place three, Kelly Dawson, she's here with us tonight, she lives in Hunter's Crossing, her term would end in 2020. She's an avid athlete and has been very, very active in the community, I'm sure you've seen her at city council meetings and several meetings, and she's wanting to get involved and give back. Barbara Walansky to place five is the same Barbara Bryant Walansky that you heard about earlier this evening, she is a reappointment, and she lives in Riverside Grove, her term would end in 2020. Josh Gordon is also a reappointment, and he lives downtown, and his term would end in 2020. For the Planning and Zoning Commission, for place three, I'm appointing Sue Frugé, I heard some people call her Sue Ann, I've, I call her Mrs. Frugé, 'cause I've spoken with her on the phone, and we're not quite yet on a first-name basis, but I'm looking forward to that. I'm point, appointing her to a single-year term that would end in 2018. She previously served on the Westlake Hills Planning and Zoning Commission, and our Planning and Zoning Commission has got a huge amount of work ahead of it, and I really wanna take advantage of her expertise as we work through this, and she has agreed to do a one-year term, she's also a small business owner. In place four is Richard Gartman, Richard is also with us tonight, he's sitting in the back of the room, his term would end in 2019. Richard is an engineer, semi-international standards governing committee, that doesn't mean a lot to some of you, but it means a lot to me, it's part of the semiconductor industry, and it means that he is well-versed in reading ordinances and laws and compliance and that sort of thing. He lives in Riverside Grove, and, Richard, don't make a liar out of me, but I think you've been coming to planning and zoning for the last eighteen months, a year, six months, something like that, he's, he's been at lots of planning and zoning meetings and lots of city council meetings. Place six is Dr. Matt Lawson. Matt, Matt's term would end in 2020, most of you know Dr. Lawson as Spring Dental. One of the things that Dr. Lawson is bringing to us that's going to be so beneficial this next year is, many of you may be aware, he's got the outstanding, awesome new building that's on the other side of the railroad tracks from us, which means that he has very recently gone through our planning and zoning process as a commercial, a commercial owner and a representative. He has also, because I think he and his family are a glutton for punishment, have also been through a residential process with our planning and zoning department very recently. So, to me, there's two excellent things, it is firsthand knowledge of exactly what worked and what did not work in both commercial and residential, and since he's just done both of those things, I think it's highly unlikely that he will be doing another commercial development in the next two years, so he won't have any conflict of interest, but he'll be able to bring that expertise to the board, which I think will be extremely helpful. Place eight, I'm appointing Diana Rose, she was, she was just appointed two or three months ago, and she's a certified house inspector, she's done an excellent job on planning and zoning, she lives downtown, so I was reappointing her. In place nine, I'm appointing Alyssa Halli Schramm, I'm pretty sure I said that right, she too lives in East Bastrop, not downtown, but east of downtown, her term would end in 2020, she was also appointed just, I think, less than six months ago. Ms. Schramm has a master's degree in urban planning, and I think that kinda speaks for itself, she would be a reappointment. For the Zoning Board of Adjustments, Jimmy Crouch has agreed to serve on the Zoning Board of Adjustment. He's previously been on the Parks Board, he was also on the Construction Standards Board, he's a general contractor, some of you know he was the project manager for the Art Guild building, so he has firsthand knowledge, firsthand experience, and what you really need on the Zoning Board of Adjustments, and that is the, the ability to understand what the law says, and what's practical and can be done, and have a reasonable sense of common sense, and be able to bring that to the decisions that the Zoning Board of Adjustments has to make. Looking to the future, one of the things, if I do not do anything else, we are going to change our application, and one of the things we're going to do about it is make it where you can electronically file, there is paper everywhere, and I think that if, if city council can use an iPad and we aren't printing out packets anymore, we ought to be able to have an electronically filed application. Here's something I wanna point out to you about our application. Who you are is about a third of the page, who do you know is about a third of the page, and that little bitty spot is under the words additional information, and that is your qualifications for the board that you would like to serve on. The other little bitty spot is an opportunity to explain your desire to serve. I will tell you that during my campaign, and this is, I'm speaking to, to council and to the audience, I kept hearing over and over, well, I filled out an application, I wanted to be on a board, and the perception is, it's not who you know, it's not what you know, it's who you know. Who you know is how you get on a board. And what I think, when our application looks like this on the first page, it, it makes people have that perception. I don't have that perception, I think that we have outstanding people in Bastrop, I think we've got untapped resources, we have ten thousand people to choose from, and I'm very pleased with the people that we found for these appointments, but I will be strongly recommending that we change our current application. Also, as we're going forward, I've asked the city manager to have a workshop, and that will be done in the very, very near future, I know it'll be done in, within July or August timeframe. We're going to have a board fair day, because we're gonna do better, I did the very best that I could, but we're going to do better moving forward. And one of the things we're gonna do is have a board fair day where we're over at the convention center, every board has a table and a spot where the executive director is, where you can find out what that board's about, what night do they meet, what, what's their strategy, who else is on the board, how many positions are up, how long do you serve, and we were, the city manager and I have also talked about, we would open that up to the nonprofits, so if citizens want to get engaged, they would have an opportunity to review where their opportunities are on all the boards and commissions within the city, but we would also have, nonprofits would have an opportunity to people who are interested in being involved. Along with that, as I have learned a bit of the hard way, every three years, you potentially can have a new mayor, and to be elected in the first week of May, sworn in in the middle of May, and expected to have appointments in the next fourteen to thirty days is probably not gonna yield the very best result. We'd like to shift those from a June to an October, and that would allow us to have our fiscal year budget, the strategy and work plan set for each board and commission, and then line up people so that when you do join a board, you're able to do board training, you know what the strategy is, you know what the scope is, everybody's on the same page. And then, this last item is an action item for each of you that are sitting on the dais with me tonight, and that is, each one of these boards is an extension of the policy and guidelines that we, the decisions that we make on council, these boards are extensions of that, and we need to have a council liaison for each board. And that, you, you're all excellent at math, so you realize we're gonna have to all do at least two. You see that I've appointed myself to the Economic Development Council as a liaison, and in our iPad training earlier this evening, all of the board meetings are on our council calendar. So as you pick your boards, I would encourage you to not pick boards that meet at the same day at the same time, that will make it hard to be in two places at once. But I am hoping that the council will agree to sign up to a board so that we have a liaison and an opportunity to keep in touch with all of our boards. I also wanna talk about special boards. I believe that we need to, time is of the essence, get going on a charter review committee, that's something else that I've asked the city manager to put on a workshop discussion, we need to talk about the timeline, and we need to talk about the composition of that charter review committee. And there are two other boards that you may have noticed that I didn't speak to, and that is the Form Base Code for the Northside Task Force. The Form Base Code was formally adopted, and it's a part of planning and zoning scope. The citizen input that was gathered from the Northside Task Force has been communicated to staff. I have not made any appointments to the Form Base Code Northside Task Force, they have not met in over eight months, and many of them said to me, we don't think that we need to keep going. So, we may, there are some things that we need to do to take care of that, but that is why you do not see that board in a part of the appointments package. On the Vision Task Force, it is an official task force, they've done some fantastic things, not the least of which was getting council to engage in the comprehensive plan, which is, as you all know, near and dear to my heart. They've done wonderful things. One of the things, they have not met in several months, and in their task force, in their ordinance, when I read it, it says that they should bring forward a list of candidates for board members. I have no such thing brought forward, and I have been asked by several people who are on the task force, that I consider having that task force come to a sunset, and, but I realize there needs to be some discussion about that, but I wanted you, I wanted to address why I had not made any appointments to the Vision Task Force. So, when I say I've spent countless hours reviewing applications and visiting with citizens, I really mean countless hours, and I mean some sleepless nights. And I want everyone in the community to know that one of the things that was a part of the decision-making process is for us to have unity and have agreement as we move forward. I have folks that some people perceive as lightning rods, and I have folks that some people do not think are lightning rods, but the reality is, when it comes to a lightning rod, perception goes a whole long way. So, as I put the boards together, I'm trying to pick particular skills with a particular purpose to represent this community. What you have before you tonight is thirty appointments. Fifty-seven percent of the people that I'm appointing have never been on a board before. We are engaging our citizens to join the process. Forty percent of the people that I'm appointing out of the thirty, forty percent of them live downtown. Forty percent of them live not downtown, that is Piney Ridge, that's Riverside Grove, that's Hunter's Crossing, that's East Bastrop. Twenty percent of them live in our ETJ or in the county. Fifty percent of them are male, and fifty percent of them are female. I want our boards to be able to function and to move forward, we have some tremendous opportunities, but it's gonna take a lot of hard work, and with that, I respectfully request that city council confirm these appointments, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Mayor Protim Schiff?
Yes. Well, first of all, I do applaud a phenomenal amount of work in a very short period of I also, I do recognize the timeframe issue that I believe moving these appointment, the appointment deadline to October as a much-needed change in our methodologies, I think that will help any new mayor get their feet on the ground before making appointments, give a better understanding of what all the city does and what all the give a better understanding of what all the city does and what all the departments and various commissions are involved in. And so hopefully, that knowledge can be used in making very difficult appointments, or appointments that can be very difficult if you don't have that information. So I, I do applaud you for doing a very, very difficult task. I also must say, I spent a lot of time, I looked at every single application, I went through, spent a lot of time on this. I went, went through all the, the applications in great detail. And the observation that I made was exactly in line with our mayor, which is, there's not near enough information on those applications, or there's not enough space on those applications to get a read of what the experience of these people really are. I noted we have, for example, there's a line, where do you work? And, you know, you say, okay, I, I work for XYZ company. It doesn't say on there, what is your occupation, what do you do for a living, what is your experience, what, what is your education, what is your training? We need to open up that application so that we really can get a better read. We're looking at many, many, many applications, and you're trying to figure out who these people are without having, you know, a big, a, a great amount of background in their individual, their, their individual knowledge and abilities. So I, I encourage the council to make some changes going forward in the application process and in moving, moving the, the date back to make it easier, especially for a new mayor. That said, I do want to address one of my favorite groups, which is the, the EDC, Bastrop EDC. I was on the EDC board for about 18 years. And I just want to say I'm concerned. I, I don't have really an issue with the, the people that are put forth at this point, but I do make the observation that as we put the bylaws together, because I was on EDC for so long, on how the selection process went, we staggered the terms, two years, two years, and two years, so that every year you would only be replacing two individuals, and the mayor would get replaced whenever the mayor would get replaced. But all of a sudden, we've got four slots, which to me is a little scary that you don't have a, a lot of experience there. Right now, we have Cam, who's been on, I don't know, has been on for a couple of terms at least. We've got two members that haven't even been on for a year. And so you got one person that's been there and two, two new people, and we're appointing four more people. Well, at this point, three people plus one. I do know that Joe Beal applied to be reappointed to his seat. I believe he brings an awful lot of experience in development. And you look at the, the Hyatt, I don't believe the Hyatt would be here if it wasn't for Joe Beal. He was very involved in, in Buc-E's. Anyhow, he has, as leader of LCRA, they're involved with development things all the time, well, in his former life. And he's a registered professional engineer, I'm a little biased to that. And I hope that, that our, our mayor will look to fill that last slot. I'm not asking for that to be done tonight, but I'm hopeful that that last slot can be filled by a person that's been experienced on the EDC board for some time and is very knowledgeable in, in economic development. And with that being said, I would move that we approve the entire list as proposed by the mayor.
I have a motion. Okay. We're, I need a second, and then we can have discussion.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Jones, did you have any comments, Ms. Jones?
I really wanted to have it before we had the motion. So recently, we've had the DMO, and their bylaws are not consistent with the charter, but we honored that because we felt like that was important. Am I right?
No, ma'am. The council approved a resolution for the DMO to be established as a standalone organization. They have their own bylaws, and they appoint their own board. What the city will have is a contractual relationship with the DMO, with a clear purpose that was established on the work session that we did that was special with the joint workshop of DMO. So there is a purpose that they must meet. There were some non-negotiables that had to be met. At the end of July, their interim executive director, Dale Lockett, will present the contract to you, and the expectation is it will meet the, the criteria that you set. But council, through an approved resolution, has already established it will be a standalone board, and the city will not appoint their board. They do that through the bylaws, and we will just contractually have a relationship with them. And the expectation is that contract would be able to be terminated at any time if they are not meeting the expectation of the council. But they will be required to come on a monthly basis with pre-established reporting mechanisms and a performance measure that they must meet.
Okay. Well, nonetheless, we approved their, I think that that whole process, they have bylaws that are in place, which we all agreed to abide by. So recently, the BEDC did the, you know, redid their bylaws. And in their bylaws, they talk about the council electing those board positions. And we voted on that, we approved it, and yet that's not what we're doing.
Mr. Bragg, would you like to speak to that?
I'd be happy to. The, going back to the DMO, one difference between the two is the state law controlling the BEDC mandates that its board of directors be selected by the governing body. A DMO does not have a similar kind of requirement in the statute. Excuse my voice, but allergies are killing me. The, I've examined carefully the bylaws, both the Eighth Amendment and the Ninth Amendment bylaws, as well as the state law creating the hot funds and, and how those organizations should be bred, as well as the state law creating the BEDC and how it's to be operated. BEDC cannot change the charter of the City of Bastrop through its bylaws. That's simply not legally possible. The state law does not mandate a particular procedure for selecting the board of directors. It said it will be selected by the governing body, essentially. The city charter establishes the procedure by which the City of Bastrop selects board members, and that is a procedure that requires the mayor to make the appointment to be confirmed or denied by the council. And so that's the process we're following. I also don't believe there's a conflict between the two. If you look at the Ninth Amendment bylaws, they say the city council will appoint the members of the board. Under our charter, the city council is the mayor and the five council members. That composes the city council. If only the city council is allowed, quote, the other council members are allowed to select the directors, you eliminate the mayor from the process, who by charter must, must be a part of the process. If you consider her just another voting member of the council, then you're giving her a vote that she is not entitled to under the charter. So I think the two are consistent. When the BEDC bylaws say that it'll be appointed by the city council, I believe that's the process we currently have. And so that's why I think that this is the correct way to do it, have the mayor do it to be affirmed or denied by the council.
Okay. Well, I just, there's a couple of things I want you to consider, and that is that I also spend a lot of time going through applications. And the BEDC, in my opinion, you know, to put all new people on, I mean, it's like we're, what, four positions? I don't think that's wise. I think that, that we should consider having people on there that have experience. And I also think that one of those places should be occupied by the mayor or a council member. And the issues that the public had that, with that before is that, that we had the mayor, I think, and two council people on there, and that was, you know, that was an issue. But for one of those positions on that board to be tied to the council, I believe is fundamentally important. And I would like the council to consider approving all the nominations as presented. But the one place now that's been opened up by, and I'm sorry, I can't think of his last name, but Richard. I know that we have an application from Joe Beal, and I would ask that he be put in that place. It's a place for experience, and allow him to, to occupy that spot. And, you know, I'm a numbers person, and if I look at all the income that we've been getting from the Hyatt, from Buc-E's, I mean, here's one person who's responsible for about 90% of the income that we're receiving, and I don't understand why he's not being reconsidered for that position. And here's a perfect opportunity. The person that was put and nominated for his spot has declined, and, and I respectfully ask that he be put into that spot. And I also think that the mayor consider occupying place seven. You know, if you don't want to serve, then I would ask that Mr. Ennis consider representing the council. And that's the only issue I have with the nominations. And I think that, that what would end up happening is then you would have two new places, and it would just keep the board in balance. I've spoken to a lot of different groups and, that have been involved with BEDC. They said that, that they've felt like that, 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 that board has come together really well, they're making really good progress, and to go in and overturn that entire group is, is a little disturbing. And, but those are two things that right now I would ask that the mayor consider.
Okay. I'd like to address a few of those, if it's okay, and then Councilmember Peterson and Nelson, I'll obviously give you an opportunity to ask a question, unless you'd like to ask any questions first.
No, I'd just like to make a comment. I totally confer with Mayor Protim and Ms. Jones, Councilmember Jones. No questions.
So Gary, I'd like to start with the terms. The documentation that I have is that there are seven members and four, the, and Mr. Bragg, you can confirm for me, my understanding is legislatively, they are two-year terms. And the way that, the documentation that was presented to me, four people come off one year, and three people come off the next year. So if there's been an adjustment in the stagger, that, what I'm looking at is four people cut, four people serve two years, and then the next year, three people serve two years. And so every year, since it's only a two-year term, then it's four and three. So.
I'm mistaken, I'm sorry.
We did do staggered terms on planning and zoning and some other ones, but like in planning and zoning, there's nine people, and so three people are on three, everybody's on a three-year term, and every year, three people come off and three people come on, unless you do a reappointment. So I think we've staggered it when we can, but what I have in front of me is every year, every other year, it'll be four, four one year, three the next year. The second thing that I'd like to point out to you is when I inherited this with council, with Mayor Kestles coming off and having not put in for the vacancy that's been there since October, which is a little confusing to me because we appointed folks that only had a two- or three-month term. But the reality is, the board that I inherited, even though it's a seven, seven-member board, it only had five members. So I'm not taking off all five, I'm not reappointing two of them. So the majority of the existing board is in place with my appointments. The three people that I have selected to participate have extensive experience. I liken it to the fact that there's life experiences that are applicable in more than one position. And because you haven't served on Bastrop Economic Development Council, it does not mean that you do not have appropriate experience to contribute to Bastrop Economic Development Council. So with the three appointments that I'm making, it only leaves one vacancy. And the reason that I have left place one vacant is because I got a phone call from councilmember Schiff, who also expressed concern about not having the mayor on the board. And I want to seriously consider his input, and I have left that position open. I intend to research that, and if, I'm, I'm going to consider putting myself on the board and also see if I get any other applications, but that's why I have left place one vacant. With place one vacant, and the three appointments that I have made tonight, and the three people who are continuing on the board, they will have six members, and they will be 50% people that have been there and 50% people that are not new to economic development, but new to the economic development board, and they will have the ability to make their meetings. My understanding is there's been some absence issues, and with two vacancies out of seven, it's, it's difficult to make a quorum. So I'm trying to give them the means that they need to move forward and do it in a judicious manner. With respect to Mr. Beal, some of you know this, some of you do not know this, I too am a registered professional engineer. Joe Beal signed my registration. I've known Joe Beal for many years, I have a lot of respect for him, which is why Friday night, before this packet was made public, I called Mr. Beal and had the very conversation with him. And I spoke with Mr. Beal, I wanted him to hear from me that I was not reappointing him, I did not want him to hear it from someone else, I did not want him to read it on a computer, I wanted to have a one-on-one conversation. And I spoke with him about the fact that unfortunately, through a series of circumstances, he is viewed as a lightning rod by many people in this community. I am not trying to put him in the position that we all experienced less than 18 months ago when he was appointed to the board. I thought it was divisive for council, and quite frankly, not a pleasant thing for him to experience either. So that is why I did not appoint Mr. Beal. We had a very professional, very agreeable conversation. He explained to me that he was disappointed, but he assured me that his talents, and they are many, would be used elsewhere. I hear of a gorgeous new home in Colorado, and I believe that we came to an agreement, and I wanted council to know, that's why I decided that way. Are there any other questions or discussion?
So you're saying that you'll consider occupying place one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Councilmember Ennis?
I would add my voice to the other councilmembers, I would encourage your participation on BEDC as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mayor, that's like committing on a hard effort, or hard work you, you did on this, and the diversity and inclusiveness that you provided in these board appointments. We have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. I'll call the question.
Go ahead.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay. Are we ready for a vote?
You have to.
Yeah. Yay. Madam Secretary, will you call the roll?
Mayor Protim Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes. Thank you very, very much. I really appreciate that. And if I can find my agenda, we can keep going.
Yay, I found it, we're on the last page. Okay. We have no executive session, correct, city manager?
Yes.
And now it's the race. Do I have a motion?
I move for adjournment.
I have a motion and a second, and by acclamation, we are adjourned at 9:18. Thank you very much.